The zoning commission public hearing is called to order on April 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Take a roll. Fisher here. Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Spellman.
Here.
Also Cindy Iggleman has been sworn in as an alternate today for the zoning commission for a one-year term that will expire on December 31st of 2022. So here.
Here.
And the audience tonight are trustees Augustine and Asherall. Is Sway?
Is virtual.
Perfect.
Just a reminder that we're recording for the purposes of transcription only.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wilson and Calibra are not here?
I didn't quite catch that.
I'll repeat it. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. The state of Ohio has extended the option of virtual participation and the trustees have allowed that as well. So we will also allow those that are attending virtually, if they wish to speak, to do so, although we ask that you raise your hand and our proctor will admit you as a speaker. If I can, I'd like to share my screen. The purpose of the public hearing is to, is the map amendment that has been proposed for the Old Hinckley Elementary School, which is located at 15...
1536.
1536. Thank you. I think it might be 86.
1586. Switch this on, have a notice.
I see that. Thank you. 1586 Center Road in Hinckley, Ohio. Michelle, if you wouldn't mind reading the public notice, please.
The Hinckley Township Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing to hear public comment on a proposed zoning amendment on Thursday, April 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM with a regular zoning commission meeting to follow in the administration building located at 1410 Ridge Road, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Routes 3 and 303. Subject of the hearing is as follows. To review proposed amendment request to the Hinckley Township zoning resolution from the Township Zoning Commission as follows. The amendment request to the district map, an application for a zoning map change requested by Highland Board of Education, Chris Walney, 3880 Ridge Road, Medina, Ohio, 44256, to rezone permanent parcel number 01603D01006, 1586 Center Road, Hinckley, Ohio, 44233, in the area of Route 3 and Route 303 of Hinckley Township from R1 Residential District to B2 Hinckley Town Center District. After the conclusion of this hearing, the matter will be referred to the Hinckley Township Board of Trustees for its action and further determination. Copies of the proposed amendment will be available for viewing, public viewing from the date of this notice to the date of the hearing at the zoning department located in the administration building at 1410 Ridge Road on Monday, 10 AM to 6 PM, Tuesday through Thursday, 9 AM to 2 PM, and Friday, 9 AM to noon. Information may also be found on the Hinckley website at www.hinckletownship.org under news and events titled Zoning Commission slash hyphen Public Hearing. All interested parties are asked to attend the hearing. Written comments may be sent to the Hinckley Township Zoning Commission, P.O. Box 344, Hinckley, Ohio, 44233. Log into hinckletownship.org for virtual Zoom option.
Thank you. So I've put up on the screen a copy of the proposed area where the, for rezoning, which is the parcels that are, well, it's a single parcel occupied by the former Hinckley Elementary School. It is adjacent on the west side, B2. There is a small section of R1 directly behind it that then connects to another business district and across the street is also a B2 district. Because we do not have any comments yet from the Medina Planning Commission, which will not hear this proposed amendment until their May meeting, the likely outcome of this public hearing will be a continuance of the public hearing until the May meeting, at which time we should be able to conclude the public hearing and proceed with the commission's agenda. Thereafter, it will be our recommendation. We will make a motion and have, make a recommendation to approve, to approve with conditions, or to deny the proposed amendment. Regardless of our recommendation, it will then be forwarded to the township and the township will set another public hearing. Thereafter, they will make a final decision to agree with our recommendation or to disapprove of our recommendation. And just for the public record, I also noticed that Trust Inspector Wilson is also in the audience now. At this time, I'd like to open up the discussion to the public. If anyone would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand, go to the podium, speak, say your name and your address for the record.
Hello, everyone. Chris Walney. I am here on behalf of the Highland School Board tonight, not particularly myself, but I will give you my address. It's 2813 Waymouth Road. I think we had a good conversation last time. I just wanted to add a few more points as to how the board came to this decision or came to ask for this request. We met with our legal counsel, we met with our real estate agent, and we felt it was in our best interest and ironically or just realistically, one of the tools that we used to come to this conclusion was the 2015 comprehensive plan. And I know that's hot topic right now because it's being, you know, re-discussed. I just wanted to read the two sections that, or read one and share the other. I don't know if you have, you do, okay. I don't know if you could share it on the screen or not.
The comprehensive plan?
Yeah. I'll read as you look, but on page nine, it just talks about what a comprehensive plan is. And I know this is obvious, but I'm just going to read it for how we came to this place. You know, a comprehensive plan is a broad policy document intended to guide decision-making that manages long-term growth comprised of goals, objectives, actions, maps, and tables. The plan guides the physical, social, and economic development of community. A comprehensive plan is implemented over time through a decision-making processes that include annual budgeting, departmental work programs, and here's what caught our attention, rezoning and subdivision of land. And obviously, we're not, you know, trying to make this contentious, but when, when looking for direction in a township... That's the page right there. When looking for direction in any of the townships that we have properties in, we treated this more like, you know, the Constitution. It doesn't matter if I'm up here, if anybody on the board is here, what drives the conversation, what drives the decision is a comprehensive plan. Also on page 39, Marcus, is a future map. And I know there's no true parcel boundaries, but I would say when this was documented in 2015, that red town center section, I had the same problem, does seem to include what would consider future properties is the old-school property. Again, not to be contentious, but just to use how we got here as a group, as a landowner. You know, I know it was discussed last time that maybe some people felt this wasn't the time, and that's why I said the comprehensive plan is such a nice tool because it takes out the I, the me, the we, and allows it to sort of drive the conversation. So that's really all I wanted to add to my conversation from last time. I'll take any questions or obviously you guys will take more questions as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walney. Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Are there any questions that were emailed in? Do you have those? I'll read them review.
I have, although yours came in late this afternoon, and so those have not been distributed because Suzanne hasn't been to the office yet, but they've been forwarded for distribution. But you're welcome to reiterate the comments if you'd like, so that they're in the public record. It's up to you.
Sure.
My name is Jim Byalowski at 2300 Sandry Creek Trail. I'm going to try to be concise because you're going to get the email that I put together, but as you consider this, I ask you to look at a couple of different things. If you look back at the zoning map that you had brought up previously, the first two properties, as you showed in the beginning of the meeting, are currently zoned as B2 for the Hinckley Town Center. Then it changes to R1 Residential as it expands further towards Ridgefield as you move out 303. In fact, there is a plan, and I believe it's, it's safe to say it's going in, a housing development that will be built in a little bit further down with Cabela Farms. So as you're considering everything, I ask you to kind of consider what the border zoning appeals does, and they look at the Duncan factors. So without reading each one and going into detail, they basically say, will the property yield a reasonable return or can there be a beneficial use of the property without a variance or change in the current zoning? My opinion is yes. So I'll give my opinion subject to yours because if it's zoned residential, somebody will buy it and there's potential to add to the development that's going next door. Is the variance or change substantial? In my opinion, yes. Will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered or will the adjoining properties suffer a detriment if the variance is granted? That I'll say is debatable. That's going to come down to your opinions as you look at it because it's joined by residential, commercial, and a proposed residential development. Will the variance adversely affect the deliverance of governmental services such as fire, ambulance? No, it won't. Either way, it's not going to change that. Did the property owner purchase the property with knowledge of the zoning variance? I'd say that's not applicable because that's been the school zone, but when they decided to build the new one, they are aware of what was zoned today. And I believe when they started getting initial estimates of what to do with the property, potentially they were given if it was residential or commercial. Can the problem be solved by some matter other than granting a variance? My opinion is yes, because it could go residential. As the change is evaluated by the board and the trustees, I ask you that you also consider what's best for the township, excuse me, township, who would benefit from the change? How does it fit within the comprehensive plan? Because I think if you look at the comprehensive plan, I'll interpret it a little bit differently than Chris did, but it's open to everybody's interpretation on it. Does it negatively impact the immediate neighbors? Depends on which side. If we're talking residential, when the proposed development and all of a sudden you're talking about potentially making that commercial on the same side of the street, it could potentially impact them. And is the change solely for the financial benefit of the property owner? I think this is where it comes into play. Yes, it's public money. Yes, it's the school system. But you know, one of the first comments that were made is they can get more for the property if it's commercial as opposed to residential. So is it strictly a financial move or what's best for the township?
Thank you. Thank you. I just would like to make one point of clarification.
Could you turn it up, please?
Yes, sorry. Let me see. I want to make sure. I just want to make one point of clarification. You had mentioned that there were two properties to the west that were zoned.
I was using the lines on the map.
Okay, so yes, there's, but there are multiple parcels going down there. There's the Hinckley Historical, then there's a vacant property, then there's the glass shop, then there's two homes that are currently being used as residents. However, they are zoned B2, and then we get to the school parcel. All of those parcels are zoned B2.
Right, ready?
Are there any other comments?
Carl Castle, 1388 Ridge Road. Now, if they take this property and change it to commercial, what can they use this property for? What type of commercial businesses?
So they're contained on pages 64 and 65 of our resolution. You would look at the B2. And so permitted, our offices, professional corporate, retail, less than 12,000 square feet, personal services, and completely enclosed buildings, banks, savings, loans, and I'm just going to paraphrase some of these, a restaurant, signs and similar findings. Then we have some conditional uses, which would include lawn nursery services, drive up and drive-through windows in association with a permitted conditional use, taverns, bars, and nightclubs, churches, libraries, schools, daycare centers, post office, assembly halls, meeting places, indoor recreation, a dwelling unit above the first floor of a building, and hospitals, medical clinics, urgent cares, and ambulatory facilities and senior residence, senior citizen residential facilities are all conditional uses within the B2 district.
What are the, what can't it be?
It can't be large retail, so over 12,000 square feet, I think, would be a large, a big one. It can't be funeral homes. It can't be automobile service stations. It can't be small power repair equipment, and it can't be outdoor recreation, are ones that are neither permitted nor conditional within the B2 district.
Okay. So how many of those businesses need the well? I mean, could they handle the well in that, that area? Is there enough, is there enough water there? Okay.
Does that mean they're running water in if they can't give well water? That could be fresh water in?
Can you come up and state your name, please? Can you come up and state your name, please?
Janis Nawalnick, 945 Marwin Drive. Now, does that mean if they haven't, they can't get the capacity with wells, that you'll be running water lines into the city to accommodate that and the school?
I would suspect, and I'm not an engineer, I would suspect that the most first logical approach would be to haul in water and deposit it, would be my guess. And if not, they would have the option of public water, if they wanted to. I don't know of public water being anywhere near there for them to tap into. So it'd be quite an expense.
Yes, so they would be running water lines into, on Ridge Road somewhere there, right?
They would have that option.
Okay.
Again, it would be a very considerable expense, considering where water is in the town.
I'm Steve Price, and I live at 1540 Center Road, right next to the elementary school, the ex-elementary school. And that is one of my concerns is about the water because they're putting in that new development that's going to be drawing off of that water table. And what's that going to do to my well? I have a shallow well, about 65 foot deep or so. That's one of my concerns. And the second one is if it does become residential property, what's going to happen with the parking lots? Because I put up with a lot of water runoff from the school, which funnels down to the back of my building. And if it becomes residential, I imagine it would level everything there, right, and put a couple houses in there where if it stays as it is, they'll probably use the building for commercial use, and the asphalt would stay there.
That would be, that would be their option.
I was wondering if there's, if this is the proper time to address, sorry, I'm losing my voice. If this is the proper time to address, you know, the water runoff because it was never really addressed from the beginning because I've lived there for quite a while and put up with it. So.
Thank you. And, and where do you live? Do you live just east?
I'm the house just east of the school. They're my neighbor. So, and that's a couple of my concerns is the water, the water table and water runoff. So, thanks.
Mr. Walney, do you have any ideas to the size of the well or the, if you have a storage? I mean, what's, what's the sizing on that? Do you know?
The sizing, it, it's acceptable for the school. We did not leave the property because of the lack of well pressure or well. The main reason we left was the size of the acreage. It's only 6.8, 7 acres. The state of Ohio now recommends a 25-acre plot at least for a new building. So you'll notice most of our new elementaries are of that size. I think Hinckley's 22 or 23. The well, if we want to talk about safety, was checked every three days by an EPA arm or, you know, outfit. The draw on that well, I can't speak beyond what the six levels of education would have been, K through 5, and the daily use of that building. I was out there this past fall. We had a crew that was using a drone to capture footage of the building. We weren't quite certain at that point if it was going to meet the fate of the other two buildings, and it has not, but I did run into the water inspecting individual, and he said this is a pretty healthy well. You know, we had parents over the years, myself included, that were always concerned about what's in the, what's in the pipes, and there's never been a negative EPA report. That's all I can tell you.
Okay, thank you. And to, and to that end, I believe that the Medina Sewer District would also do a review of any proposal for that building to make sure that the sanitary and this well are sufficiently sized for whatever the proposal is, the number of people occupying that building, as part of their review process.
Yeah, one more thing. Sorry. I would say that I look at this as a stage and step conversation. I think everybody's had valid, you know, Mr. Price, you had a valid question. I think that's hard to answer today. You know, we, again, we're a property owner, but it's a very interesting circumstance. This is the only building within Hinckley. You know, my grandfather went there in the 30s. I mean, when's the last time this building's been up for a conversation? Never. So this is a unique conversation. But I think, you know, we get to that point where, what, what does it become? And, you know, why are we up here? Well, I think we have to do our due diligence as property owners of a public building to not get the most bang for the buck, but to, you know, return as much as we can. It wouldn't go into our coffers. It would just go into the general fund for the public. But I think at later time would be a conversation about what does the next owner want to do with it? And then, Mr. Price, I think that would be the Medina County Planning, the engineers, they would come and say, well, you need to mitigate this or something to that effect.
I don't know when the best time is.
No, I mean, it's obviously always good to go early. I felt, you know, this was an early conversation when we started it in January. So I think it's just an open book right now. So I hope that helps, Marcus.
Thank you both. Are there any questions from the virtual audience trustee?
Do you want to ask out loud, would you raise your hand?
If anyone in the virtual audience would like to participate in this, please raise your hand and we'll unmute you.
Carl Castle, 1388 Ridge Road. So if the property stays residential, now do they have to, is there more approvals if it stays residential? Well, whoever moves in, the new tenant, will there be more? What's different?
So it's an R1 district, which means that the size of the lot and the front edge of the lot would basically permit two, likely two parcels. So the school could potentially subdivide that into two parcels and sell off each one of those, and that person would have the right to build.
Possible.
A home. It's got to be a residential home on that.
How about commercially? Could they tear the building down and put a new street in and put individual commercial buildings?
It wouldn't be zoned for commercial, so you couldn't put a business in there.
On the residential, if it stays residential.
If it stays residential, they could potentially put in a street, but I don't think that even with a street that they would be able to get more than two homes.
So ton, a ton of restrictions then with residential.
It's the standard R1 restrictions, correct?
Yeah.
Which mandate the frontage, the, there's no limit to the size of the home per se. It's based upon what the setbacks.
So if it gets sold, okay, so that gets sold, that may tax.
Well, we're on zoning right now.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's my brain. Just taxes running through my mind. Okay, thanks.
Chairman Fisher, I don't have anyone virtually.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience?
I just wanted to ask a quick question.
Please go ahead.
Angela Chesnick, 2362 Country Brook Drive. I was wondering, how much, how much property is there?
6.8 acres.
Okay, so it would have to go with the two-acre min, whatever.
Correct.
It would fall into that if it stayed residential. And then the property that the school went on, was that residential?
Yes.
Okay, so we already gave them a variance to change that to be, what, is that still residential or is it still residential?
It's residential. And the school, I believe, is permitted.
Oh, under residential.
With the R1 district.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Did they go through the?
I think they went through the BZA, through the.
You're correct.
But it's still, it's still, it's a condition. You have 65. It's conditioned.
Yeah, so within R1, it is a conditional use. It's specified on page 39 of the regulations. Mr. Pearl, you.
Richard Pearl, King Road. I have some prepared comments, but I have to modify them a little, so bear with me. Based on what we've heard, I don't want to repeat things. The application states that Hinckley Township will benefit by having a contiguous, contiguous B2 district. The benefit to the township is questionable, in my opinion. Jim, who spoke here earlier, is a member of the steering committee. I am an appointed member of the steering committee. Dave Manley is a member of the steering committee. Some residents have expressed a...
This signal man is also.
Oh, that's right. Cindy, too. We've got four of us here. Okay. Some residents have expressed a desire to develop the town center business district, but no residents have expressed a desire to expand the B2 business district. Considering the township is halfway through a six-month-long audit, now may not be a good time to be expanding the B2 district without a written plan aligned with the comprehensive plan and approved by the trustees. Perhaps this partial should be kept residential so it could someday be rezoned with maybe a new zone, this new residential district. So it could be rezoned for small lots for senior housing. I'd also, I also see a little misstatement on the application that says it's surrounded by residential property, but there's really only, I'm sorry, it says it's surrounded by B2, but there's really only B2 to the north and to the west. Thank you.
Marcus, one more comment.
If I can actually address one thing that Mr. Pearl said. So we, we have a current comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan...
Does your speaker...
It doesn't come through the microphone. Okay. We, we have a current comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan was the result of public comment, and it was approved by the township. This application was submitted while that current comprehensive plan was in place. So very similar to when we make text amendments and a submission comes in prior to final approval of those text amendments, this will likely be reviewed under the same standards. So it will be reviewed under the comprehensive plan as it currently exists. That's the comprehensive plan that was, in fact, you know, built by the public and approved by the trustees.
What was the comprehensive plan?
Sure. So there's a comprehensive plan done about every 10 years. So this started in the 80s, and they're, they used to be called, I think, a master plan. And it's a plan where we, we survey the community. The community expresses their desire for what types of items they'd like to see in the community. The community expresses their desire for what types of items they'd like to see in the community. And then that is compiled into a report and that is used as guidance for the zoning commission to look at, to consider what types of regulations to put into place. So the last comprehensive plan was done in 2015. And so you can actually find a comprehensive plan on the website and Mr. Woolney referred to it. It's not too, too long. It's 85 pages with appendixes, but that will discuss it.
Small property, there really wasn't in the, in the scheme of the.
It's not specific to any single property. It's a general overview of the goals that we would like to achieve within the community. So we're not looking at individual properties per se and saying, this is what we'd like to see on that property.
Was there a call sent out to the residents to vote on having more growth or businesses in Medina?
Get them up here, son.
Yeah, let me, let me, Mr. Woolney speak first.
I'm good. I just wanted to talk to that point that both gentlemen brought up. It's a good forum to have that conversation. I, I appreciate your comment about the quote unquote grandfathering. It wasn't done in that intent, but it was done under the intent of what was the plan in 15? Because it talks about future growth in the town center. And I think this property is within that town center. And, you know, the ability to have the discussion of rezoning as a, as a full conversation, not one of, you know, oh, please let us do this. It was more of a, how do we get there as a community conversation? So I think that 15 plan, the way we saw it, which others have, others have shared, they see things sometimes a little differently, but as we shared that and looked over it, does the 2015 plan talk about a growth of the town center? It seems that it was talked about in the future and I would say now, you know, we're in that future. So just to comment on that.
Mr. Manley?
If I could, I was on the 2015. And to the best of my knowledge, we never considered anything really east of the historical society and the churches being town center. I appreciate the broad, but it was never considered. Whether it is or not, I, that I can't answer.
Yeah, my reference was just that page 39, the, the map. That was rough, right? Or was it an actual goal?
No, the, the big thing at the time, and I hate to get off to it because of sewer and water and where weather, had the health department and thing, everybody felt about all that sort of thing.
Right.
We didn't emphasize the town center and as much as maybe could have, but because we knew that there was major problems, major impediments to doing some of the things that people thought might happen there.
Right, okay.
Mr. Mark's will.
And I, you know, I appreciate that you see it as part of the town center, but it's not because it's not zoned that way. I, I appreciate your opinion.
Right, and that, that's how we got to it.
Zoned as part of the town center, so we, we can't refer to it as, oh, no, that's also part of the town center.
Right.
Because really what we're, what we're considering right here is a significant change.
Right.
Because anytime you rezon something, it is not to be done lightly.
No, agreed.
Just the same way if someone owns five properties adjacent to Buzzards Cove.
Right.
Can they just say, I wanted, I want a B2 now?
Right, and I, I see the code as an outlier, but I get your point. I think here it was more of, it was not intentionally cut out, but if you look at it from a geometry standpoint, it's out and it falls under the guise of, let's have a conversation. Because it makes, it's, it's close proximity to town center. I don't want to label it town center.
I'd actually disagree with you that it wasn't intentionally cut out because it was zoned R1. You said your grandfather went there in 19, or 30s, 1930s? I don't believe the residential district existed
I doubt it did.
when it was built.
Right.
So that when they did create the, the different zoning districts, it was specifically zoned R1.
And I can see that. And then I come back to the comment of, when's the last time that building's been up for a discussion for a, a property change?
When, when they did the actual zone.
Right.
When they put it into that district and, and said, you know what? When this school isn't here, we do want a residential.
Right, and that's, and I think that's where we're at today, to have that open conversation. So that's what the genesis, if you will, of how we got here to discuss being part of that town center. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
At the time, the budget was built for all three elementary schools.
Just recently, this, this past year? Yeah.
Well, I want to talk about when you were contemplating the construction of the new elementary school.
That started about 14.
Right. So part of the cost of that was the demolition of the three old schools.
Correct.
So where is that today? I see Granger Elementary was demolished, just
Right.
So I asking, I don't know what status the one downed lots were.
Sharon's gone, Granger's, Granger or the middle school, whoever, however old you are.
Still is budgeted and planned to demolish the old Hinkley Elementary.
The budgeting was there. Based upon the real estate agent and the conversations we had, like I said, with our legal team in real estate, the valuation was much higher than the other two buildings, based upon the shape that it's in.
Keeping the building there?
Yes. So
With all its
Even with its, it's, it's still healthier than the other two were.
But that's only if it gets rezoned, correct?
I mean, it could stay a school, it could stay a senior center, it could stay a hospital.
But again, only if it gets rezoned. If it does not get rezoned,
Right.
it stays R1, it is not more attractive to a property owner.
It's probably more attractive because it's cheaper.
As, as a single family residence, it's cheaper to
As an R1
that entire building
And that was part of the
and live in it.
I mean, if somebody really wanted to for argument's sake, right.
Yeah.
But talking to the real estate agent, you know, when you look at residential versus business, the business carries more.
Absolutely, but that's, that's exactly what we're saying.
Right.
You're saying that it is more attractive financially to leave the building.
For, for us?
But that is only if it gets rezoned to B2.
Well, I, I will share this part too. I think, yes, it's more attractive to leave the building. We have to leave it either way. As a district who has, you know, our first responsibility as a board is fiduciary. And if we carry an extra building with the, you know, the heat, the cooling, you know, that, those things, that's not very responsible. So we gave ourselves a window of time to look at this scenario. Either way, we have to walk away from it. And we wanted to provide an opportunity, and I, I know it sounds like I'm beaten on a dead horse, but if we don't do what I just said fiduciarily, bring back more money, we have to at least try. Because if we don't, let's bring somebody else up here in a few months. Let's say somebody buys it. Come up here and they talk to the board and say, board, we'd like to change this to commercial. And somehow, some way, they were granted and we weren't. We don't want to be caught saying, oh, we didn't even try. Look, look what the board did. They didn't even try and this individual got it and now they're making, you know, a billion bucks. That was a, a driving force, but you have to understand that from the presence of financial. You know, typically when a homeowner comes, comes up here or a property owner, they are looking to better their project for themselves. It's not greedy. Property owners should be the major mouthpiece in a community. They're the majority owners. That's why I brought it before with the comprehensive plan, whether it's 2003, 2015, 2022, that is the mouthpiece that speaks to the functionality of what goes on in the township. Not us, me, you know, it's, what does that say? And that's why I sort of, not jokingly, but realistically called it the constitution of Hinkley, because it drives whether we're here or it's 100 years from now. So that's how, that's why I came up this, this evening, to bring you to where we were. Because a lot of times you can share a story with somebody, but how'd you get there?
I'm, I'm trying to understand. You, you've said a couple of times here that you're going to leave the building no matter what.
We're going to sell it R1 or sell it B2? We can't keep it.
And what I'm saying is that having the building there.
Yes.
Okay, like it is right now.
Right.
Makes it more saleable, certainly a higher price point if it's B2.
Yes.
Than if that building is there
Yes.
and you sell it as R1.
Correct.
You will have to remove the building to sell it R1 in all likelihood.
No.
Because in order to actually build on that lot, they're going to have to remove that building.
The, the thought would be the owner would take the responsibility of removal and then, then the money.
But I would add to that, that you've already budgeted for removal there.
Right.
Stayed R1, it would be the school board's responsibility to go ahead and demolish that building.
Right, but that money would go right, right.
That money has been put aside, it was part of your
It's been put aside. It's like if you and I do a home addition and we do, you know, the money goes right back to taxpayers. It doesn't stay in a kitty. It's part of a, like a withdraw kind of sense when you're doing an addition.
Would that money go across the entire district or specifically just Hinkley?
Across the district.
So Hinkley bears the burden and gets a third of the benefit.
You could say burden, but I would say, you know, it's an uptick of cash back to the district. It's a bigger third than it would be the other way. I wouldn't call it a burden, it would just be a reality.
A lot of times realities aren't burdens.
Well, they are. But again, back to the, back to the comprehensive plan, it's not how I feel or we feel, it's just what the plan dictates.
I think it's the interpretation of what the plan dictates.
Agreed.
Because my concern is having this zoned B2 and having a senior center complex, another apartment center in there.
Yeah.
And, and given that we've already been through this and the public is in uproar over it.
Because we rezoned a couple of properties.
So
That's the only reason that thing went in.
I am, you know, so we're, we're back at the table with, unfortunately, your last name has the same last name as the person who had
Well, I'm here for the board.
We're back at the table and we're still here. And the angry residents are again, the interpretation of that comprehensive plan.
And I just, you know, I think whether I'm here, whether my last name is Smith or not, the comprehensive plan is a comprehensive plan.
Correct.
And if people are in an uproar, you know, I'm not saving face for my dad. My, I mean, for anybody who wants to know, that was a burden he received 30 years ago and wants nothing to do with it. But there's generations above me that will receive things that I will never receive in that conversation. So just so that's public knowledge. But the comprehensive plan allowed that to happen. I'm not asking for things to change place for additional benefit. I receive no benefit here. This is a public mouthpiece. So I do get your point. I, I just wanted to have this conversation tonight so we could have it in a public forum and all questions could be asked. So I appreciate the question.
Well, I would just like to point out that if anybody goes to the Hinkley, or I'm sorry, the Highland School Board FAQ, there's question number 12, what will happen to the old school buildings? The answer is the elementary buildings would be abated and demolished. The costs associated with this process is included in all new building scenarios.
Right.
And that's what you have out there today. So I think any, any constituent, anybody in the, in the school district would simply have the expectation that all three buildings are going to be demolished.
And that would be, that was day one conversation. As we found out what that was worth, I mean, honestly, we could demolish it and then the money, the money's there.
That, that is what is out on the website.
Right, and things grow and change as the project, because it's been a three year project. You know.
I'm just saying that's what's on your
Well, I agree with you and that's out there. But I would say also, there's been, you know, 24 to 48 meetings since then where we found out new information. And as we get new information, we have to act upon it.
Is, is the new information the
The valuation of the property.
So it's a money driven request.
Well, don't label it like, you know, money driven hungry, but it's money driven fiduciarily responsible.
So it's a money driven response, request.
Yeah.
I understand fiduciary responsibility. I understand you're
I just
building your own network. I, I understand that process.
Right.
We have to label it what it is.
It is, I just want to make sure that we know it's not
That is, that alone is not a significant enough compelling argument, certainly not for me. I can't speak for the entire board.
No, I get that.
I, I will, I will say that if anyone else came in and said, I'm going to make more money if I sell this as a business district
Right.
instead of a residential district, we'd be done with the conversation by now.
Right, and that's, that was my point about the school. You know, it's a different story. Part of the process that we went through, the new information we found out, we're legally responsible to get evaluations on all the buildings that you tear down. You know, just like we're legally responsible to auction anything that's over $10,000. So once those evaluations came back and we found out Hinkley was worth X, it was our responsibility to try to get X because of what we have to do with the monetary funds.
Well
That's why that
It's a matter of degree.
It is.
Because if, if it stays R1 and if you demolish the building
Yep.
and the property is sold, it's not like you're not going to get any money out of it, so.
We won't get the cost of the demolishing, but it will get some, it'll be a, a negative wash.
Won't get the cost of demolishing that you've already, you've already budgeted for and have the funds set aside. So ultimately, we've got to take those funds that are already set aside. And budget, all right, it's gone. Doesn't exist, neither does the school. Now you have the option to get money into the district
Right.
by selling it R1.
Right. R1's fine, just trying to get as much as possible, not in a greedy fashion.
We have a virtual hand raised.
Okay.
That's been raised for some time. I'm going to ask them to unmute if it's Mr. or Mrs. Freshwater.
Okay, we're unmuted, can you hear us? Um, the, two things. One, we, we just were curious, what is the difference between the estimates for the residential zoning and the business? Maybe as a, like as a percent of the sale or just a, you know, two different numbers?
The biz, the, the B2 evaluation, the residential is about one third of the B2 evaluation.
And then, you know, as, as a citizen and, and something that Mr. Pearl had kind of alluded to, you know, we, we're not really, you know, eager to see the, the business district expanding downtown, developing what's there, there's definitely nice, but not really looking to have an industrial or business zones kind of oozing out into the rest of the township. But I was also, we were kind of wondering if, from, from the zoning commission's standpoint, it wouldn't be more beneficial from the township's perspective if it was, if the property was going to be rezoned, if it wouldn't be done at the request of a property owner who had a specific plan for the use rather than this, you know, like you said, it's kind of a nebulous, we just know it's worth more this way. And it could be anything on this list from zoning regulations as opposed to someone who purchased the property and had a specific use and, you know, I want to do this. And as a township, we agree that this is something that we wanted it to be used for and, and to make a rezoning. It's a little more specific.
Or as a resident that wanted to live, live through the town.
Right, yeah, and I, I understand that comment in that statement. But again, I, I'll just go back to, you know, we had to go down this road and ask the question from a responsibility standpoint. And Mr. Pearl, again, it would be B, I'm sorry, R1 is a third of the value of the B2 evaluation.
Can you give that another?
I probably, I probably can't.
Then the school board, it was for the zoning board, not the school board. Guess the board's a little confused.
You're fine. I understood your question. Thank you for your question.
That, that was all we had, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Though, though, just one second. The one thing that I would like to note is that the way that we regulate what happens on a property in terms of use is through what is permitted and what is conditional within the B2 district. And this isn't just this property. When we look at many of the properties in the B2 district, they are very likely underutilized relative to the amount of space available on those. And so if there's a concern about the types of uses that should take place on a property, it really needs to come back to us looking at what is permitted in the B2 district and evaluating whether what is permitted or what is conditional still should be within the B2 district, not looking at individual proposals and evaluating whether that proposal makes sense or not. Because for many of these other parcels that are already zoned B2, we're not going to see a proposal. They're able to provide its permitted use, move it through without coming to this zoning commission. So that's how we regulate what happens on a property. Mr. Woolney, did you have anything else before?
I didn't. Anybody else have a question? Mr. Price?
No, you're saying if it stays
Please come up to the microphone.
Please come up, because we're recording it for our, I'm sorry.
Guess I'll stand over here.
Yeah. I guess you just
My, my question is if it stays residential, you're going to leave the building, walk away from the building, or are you going to tear it down?
I guess it depends on the conversation with the new owner. You know, what agreement can we reach? A lot of this is, is hypothetical. You know, I, I won't call your water question hypothetical because it's real.
Yes.
But how would it be addressed in the future is hypothetical. I, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm just
No, good conversation, I'm not sidestepping it, I just don't know.
Okay.
If there are And I just want to remind everyone as well that we will likely be continuing this public hearing, so there will be entirely second meeting occurring in May that will have more opportunity for public comment if there are any.
Nikki Long, 1941 Parker, I, I just had a question for you. I know this is sort of looking ahead, but with the, the school district expanding and more developments coming in, is there thought of maybe holding on to the property in case you do have to build another school?
Right, I can speak to that.
Sure.
So the, the question was about future planning, something that we did during the 2014 timeframe forward to today where the buildings are built. Hinckley is on a pretty flat line. I, I know I looked at the 2015 comprehensive plan and how it's projected to grow over, you know, X number of years. There is growth there. But Hinckley was the smallest of the three buildings. Granger was in the middle and Sharon was through the roof. I'll just say it was because of the annexations of Wadsworth. You know, smaller lots, more families. The one conversation we've been having is to your point, what do we do with the Sharon property? That's more of a reality in Sharon than it is in Hinckley. So to keep it, probably not a need because we sized the new building to adapt to that growth in the next 10 to 20 years. But good question. Yeah, you're welcome.
Can I make one more? I, I just wanted to, you know, point out, and this is 36, page 36 and 38 of the 2015 comprehensive plan. Just, I just want to point to the public input that's on page 36. You know, number one, the key themes, it says the community desires to, number one, maintain large lots. And number two, preserve the rural character. Number three was enhance the town center, so enhance, not necessarily enlarge. And then page 38, there's, there's four objectives. The first one is promoting rural, low-density development, followed by a second and then a third, and the last objective is grow consistently with the future land use map. Now, Mr. Manley, I'm not sure if this means that number one on the list was the, the number one objective and then it was, you know, ranked in, in order of most important or if it just happened to be, you know, one, two, three and four. But to me, I, I interpret it as that is the main objective of the township is to promote low-density development and then, you know, followed by two and three, and then the fourth would just be to, you know, expand according to the future land use map. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Pearl, Mr..
I, I have a question for you. Attending the, the school board meetings over the last few years, my understanding was you could not build a building bigger. You could not build a school larger than the current capacity. That is, you could not build the building larger estimating that the, it was going to expand.
Right, you're giving current plus X, and X is a small state derivative based upon subdivisions coming into play.
Okay.
Now, they would not, I don't like it because they wouldn't give us what was projected in Wadsworth. So Sharon, which to Nikki's question.
Can you step a little bit? Sorry, we got.
Yeah, so Mr. Pearl asked about the state allowing us during the construction project to build larger than an existing current building. And my, my comment was that we planned, it's, it's, it's existing plus X, and X is a very small number. That's why I said I didn't like it. Because we looked at the numbers, you know, whether you want to talk about different streets, different, different sections of the townships. We thought the growth was going to be much larger, and it's been proven to be, proven to be true in Sharon over the last 10 years. Okay, we built, I think, don't, don't quote me, but everybody's quoting me. Don't quote me, but Sharon was built, I believe, to house 800 kids. Okay, we're not there right now. The new Hinckley was around 500. So that gives you an idea of the population density differences. But the allowable size to build was the, the existing plus a little bit. Not what the state, not what we wanted, because we saw what reality looked like. The state doesn't look at that. So you're correct, but it gives you a little bit of a buffer because why else would you build a new building? I know there's other reasons, but one of the main reasons is growth. And you're allowed to have a little bit. So we oversized it a hair and we're thinking about, Nikki, keeping, we don't know about Sharon.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
None of my questions are going to be affected to you.
Thank you.
Feel free to answer them, Paul, when I'm done.
Jim Larson, 20 Car Road, Hinckley. First, I'd like to, I might have, I have about six points. I'll try to be as brief as possible. Number one, Mr. Woolley is arguing that somehow we should treat this school property as if it was different than your property or my property or anyone else's property. I don't buy into that argument, you know, a little bit. So that's point number one. Point number two is, it's already been brought up. I don't think we should be in the business of rezoning property just to make it more valuable. If you're going to do that, you're going to have a line around the block of people with property winding up around here to get the same treatment that they've got. Because I'd like to improve my property by changing the zoning as well. And I don't think that's a, a great, a great thing either. He's mentioned the comprehensive plan numerous times. In my mind, the comprehensive plan is guidance. It's not, it's not wholly writ. And it's open to interpretation, and since it's open to interpretation, it's going through a rewrite and a review right now. So in my view, I would really like to put this right in the, the seat of the comprehensive plan committee and find out what they think ought to happen with that school property. Mr. Pearl and I have had some messages back and forth, and I think he has some real valuable concepts of what might go there. Another point would be that the 2015 comprehensive plan had numerous objectives and goals and ideas within it. To the best of my knowledge, only two of those goals have come to fruition. Number one, it was the senior housing. Number two, it was a redwood development. Other than that, to the best of my knowledge, the center of town hasn't been improved one jit or jot other than what Carl has done with the barber shop and the donut shop. Why would we want to expand beyond an area that hasn't been improved since the comprehensive plan was composed? And lastly, that might be my last point. But anyway, I would really like to see this get into the fold of the comprehensive plan committee and have them really noodle it around and see what's best for it. But I do not think that schools should be treated any different or in any special way whatsoever. And it should be considered from the comprehensive plan point of view as guidance and not wholly writ. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other public comments?
Carl Castle, 1388 Rich Road. One other question, if they made that property or the, the school, they made it into a historical building. Okay? And then they changed it over to commercial, then what would you be allowed to put in there?
I, I can't tell you anything about what.
So there's a lot of restrictions, though.
I, I know that there's restrictions on historical buildings. I don't even know if that would qualify for a historical building. I don't think it's been there long enough. I think that those are normally 100 years or more, but I don't, I can't.
I mean, how many people have gone to school there?
It's been modified several times. It's been modified several times, so I, I would be surprised if it would qualify under any of them.
Interesting question, though.
Richard Pearl, I'd just like to add a little more to Matt's comment that the school was built before we had a zoning code. And when we had the first zoning code, it obviously was designated R1. I think that first zoning code was around 1948. I know that Pat Dermody, who used to be on the zoning, said that she has a copy of the original, not the original, the second zoning code, and it's approximately four pages. And I was going to ask Dave Manley if we have a copy of that in the historical society.
I don't know, to tell you the truth.
You're not aware of it?
I know we, there's stuff back through the late 60s, but I don't remember. And it could be there, really could, but I.
My point being, I agree with you, Matt, that it was originally R1. It is still R1. There was never any other intention. Thank you.
If there are no other public comments, I would like, go ahead, trustee.
Melissa Augustine, Higley Township Trustee, Zoning Liaison. To Mr. Larson's point, if we turn this over to the, the steering committee or the comprehensive plan survey questionnaire, that would be making it a special project. That's not happened with any other map amendment or tax amendment in Hinckley Township. We have a legal process that we have to follow, and that's what we're doing. And we cannot deny someone because of timing. We can't say, well, this isn't the right time. Let's wait till you sell it and then see what happens. That's not part of the legal process either. We can't deny that. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. And, and to trustee Augustine's point, the, the statute is 51912 of the Ohio Revised Code. That dictates the process. So if anyone wants to look it up, that's how you can understand the process that we're going through.
Richard Pearl, I'll just throw it out there. Is it possible that you could withdraw the application for a year? Would that be a huge expense to the school board to keep the building heated and electric running? And then we would be able to go through this comprehensive plan audit and begin to understand if we want to redo the comprehensive plan. Not trying to get ahead of it. I'm just saying it might be easier for all of us to come to an agreement if, if you could postpone this.
Right. Before he speaks, I'm not actually sure that that's even legally possible at this point. We've started the process. I don't know. I would have to check with legal to see if we could halt the process. Because I'm not so sure we can.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Right, thank you for that question. Again, sticking to the, the theme of it's not my opinion or it's not my feeling, which is important to me. You know, one of the reasons we decided in 2014 to add the building or to, to build the new buildings was we were spending north of $140,000 a year band-aiding Sharon's ceilings because teachers were getting rained on. The middle school was, you know, shorts on the bottom and winter jackets on top, or sorry, Granger, my middle school. And back to the theme of landowner, I, you know, and to Marcus's point and others, it may not be legal. I, and Mr. Manley, I'm not going to pick on you. I, I know last, last time you mentioned, I don't know if this is the right time to do this. Those, those sort of stick on me like, you know, and I appreciate everybody else's comments about this is a special landowner. We're not special. It's just those convers, they stick on me because the landowner doesn't have all the rights in the world, but they carry and derive much of the township and what happens. And I want every landowner to have a say. That's why this meeting is perfect. That's why, you know, everybody's giving comments, which I appreciate. I just don't know, you know, I don't know when the school starts or stops doing that, you know, dance. Do we want to spend 100, you know, it's not $150,000 to heat Hinckley or, or check the water well, but there is a cost. And then, you know, six months from now, I'll be at a board meeting and a parent will ask, oh, why can't we do sixth grade camp this year? So I'm not trying, that's very gran, very high level, not granular, but I'm just giving you examples of if I'm sitting in one of these seats at, in, in my location, stuff that I'll have to answer. So to even look back and say, let's pull it, legally, I don't know if it's possible. You know, we would like to get out from underneath this. It's not a burden. I love the school. I, I went there myself. Okay, that's hard. Hard pill to swallow, but it's what we have to go through. So I don't know that, where that would land. I've always been a big fan and I know I've had discussions. You know, God bless Ray. We had, we had a million conversations about what do we do with that building? It's, it's hard to come to financially. What do you do? You know, can the township take it over? You know, those are things that were all discussed. I think at this point, we'll stay where we're at. I don't know legally if it can be discussed in the comprehensive plan meeting going forward without the context of this going on right now. But I just, I'll, I'll let somebody else answer to that. But thanks for the question.
And if I, if I can build on that a little bit, honestly, it's, it's, there is a fiscal responsibility that the board also has that if they do pull it off and they're maintaining it, let's say it's just for six months, and then in six months, the township says, nope, tear it down. We want to go. There's, that, that's another risk that he's, the, the board is exposed to. That, that would be one of my concerns if, if I were in Chris's seat.
So, and, you know, Mr. Larson, I know none of that was contentious. You had great, great points. I just, as being the property that would, you know, receive special treatment, full disclosure, I'm here to have this conversation in full public so we can have an honest conversation to make sure we don't get special treatment, but we do ask in a special way. This is the only school property besides the new property, maybe a daycare or two, I'm not sure, that would have this conversation. So again, just, just to make that point. Thank you.
If there are no other public comments.
I mean, I will agree. One last question.
Right.
Jim Larson, 20 Car Road. I wouldn't, I wouldn't come up here and, and offer a solution that was against Ohio law, and I wouldn't dispute anything trustee Augustine has said, more out of ignorance than anything else or, or you. But I really do object to listening to the, what amounts to, you know, the abused dog commercials on TV where you got to feel sorry about something. That really doesn't have anything to do with anything. It's a property transaction that you're trying to have occur. And playing on, playing on heartstrings with me, especially for something like this, and in light of the information read by the new trust, your alternative, I forgot your name, never knew it. I apologize. Really compounds everything in my mind is why it is you should get special treatment for that property. And I don't think you should. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pearl, we really do have to move on.
Ken, Ken, I'll sit down.
You'll have another opportunity.
I, I understand. I just wanted to know what's the next step, turning it over to Medina County Planning Commission?
It's already been turned over to Medina.
It has. Will any of these comments be part of that?
Well, discussion on that at our regular meeting.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I would like to make, I would like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the proposed map amendment. So moved at 1586 Center Road in Hinckley to be continued on May 5th at 6:30 PM. So moved.